Clear.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with whose name just to be praised.
Well, good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Morning.
Small crowd today.
Small agenda.
Small agenda. Everything should go fast. Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So, no changes needed?
Uh, the only thing I thought we should mention on there is that we're gonna have a small work session for negotiations with our union rep down here at the bottom after just a phone call with her.
So with that addition, I'll make the motion, noon?
I'll start for now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Through the minutes from March eighth.
I have to read through them. I look. I don't see anything wrong, so I'd make a motion too.
First and second. Everyone in favor of that?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns. Nobody on Zoom. Nobody here. So I'll take that as a known. Alright, Ben's not quite here yet, so we'll move down to committee reports.
I had on Wednesday, we had the mobile food pantry. We could, uh, well, we had a little conflict with the vaccination through the hospital, but they were well done before we got going. So, numbers for a hundred and forty families, three twenty-seven for three hundred and twenty-seven people in those hundred and forty families and twenty-two volunteers. So it went pretty smooth and we've got all the food given away. That's all I had.
Okay.
Okay.
I had, I had, um... Okay, okay, well, I had a Necco coffee. Um, I was on that I went to that was very interesting. They don't call the CARE Act anymore. It's about, oh, my goodness, I don't know what it's called. It's a care act that, um, it's kind of like money and things that, um, passed to the rec. Um, so we probably need to be posted into that. Um, ISAC also sent a really good, um, email last week to, um, the AL. Um, um, you follow the ISAC if it shows that there's a care test to do, um, for that, um, yeah. Friday twelve, I had a meeting, um, Bill B. with Dawn, um, their CEO and their, um, chairman on their board, Paul Martin, along with Clarence Mark O'Connor to go over, um, some of the things that, um, CSF currently does, but, um, Rolling Hill does not. So we'll be working on that. We'll talk about how it works because, um, first and prior, um, that has been, um, so long, one year on a single to represent them and, um, that, um, is that all I had?
For that CARE Act, can we claim, uh, lost wages for, for employees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we've been, we've been logging all of this sick leave for all of our employees as COVID sick, putting it under a second category so that we can keep a, a running tab of, of lost wages for secondary roads.
Yeah, correct. Yes, you did that.
Hey, I didn't make it back from Sandy's doctor appointment. Had to go down to Des Moines Wednesday, so I missed the food pantry and the animal shelter. That's the only meetings I had last week.
Alright, pulled back a week because Monday morning, the eighth, we had an LEC meeting that morning. And then on Wednesday tenth afternoon, I did, uh, I guess you'd say, listen in to the supervisor's affiliate time on Zoom, the virtual ISAC conference. Um, there was one really interesting thing, uh, on that presentation, and that is, of course, with the census, the redistricting coming up. I won't, I won't go into great detail, but...
It's a real pointy football, ain't it?
Oh, it's quite a deal. I mean, it's, it's back and forth deal, but that's something that obviously will, everyone, every county, everybody has to deal with coming up here pretty quick, so we'll be dealing with that as we move forward through, throughout the rest of this year. But that was, it was an interesting discussion and the, uh, and they had some other things on there too, but that was what I put away. And that was from, uh, one to four Wednesday afternoon. That was the, the one session that I found, because it's gonna affect, you know, everybody in the state, every county in the state. We have to do it every ten years, so we'll be faced with that one. But, so as far as supervisor stuff, that's all I had last week.
Okay, Wednesday night, I did the dog shelter at six thirty. Um, nothing too crazy there. We just talked about this repeat offender dog. And it wasn't yours, Bruce. So...
A repeat offender dog?
Yeah, and we can stress to the, uh, our schedule there that, you know, you can have to play hardball because it's supposed to be fifty and higher. So she was gonna chat with me all a little bit more about, hey, and actually, she went out to her house and said, I'll help you fix your fence. So they told him to keep it up. A real simple fix. This time, I just, just don't wanna do it. But anyway, uh, everything's run, actually pretty smooth there. Uh, glad to see that they seem to operate without dipping into their reserves. So that is good, because I've been kinda watching that. The main thing, I thought things started going south is that's what they started doing. So that part was good. Uh, and Thursday morning, you have an economic development meeting at a city hall. First time we met face to face since March. So, um, talked a lot about TIP districts because the state down there is trying to get rid of the TIP districts, which will be really detrimental to some projects, especially city projects where they gotta pay for a lot of infrastructure. Doesn't affect counties too much, but counties do use them. Um, and we'd also talked about the wind energy. The talk in that thing is like the transmission companies now want the wind energy to pay to improve their transmission lines. Because their transmission lines are getting overloaded or getting maxed out, so they need to improve their transmission lines, and they're looking for people to help pay for it. So talked about that a little bit.
As, you know, I keep remembering the LEC meeting.
Oh, LEC meeting on the eighth, yeah, because that's typically in the first of the month.
Yep.
Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome. And that animal shelter thing.
Yes.
Are we ever gonna get, uh, possibly like countywide, uh, animal control person, if you will?
We still don't have one. Uh, we visited with the couple people there from different communities. And what we're gonna shoot for here, the deputies are probably good at picking up dogs.
They don't.
They don't care.
I wouldn't want to.
No, that, they, they don't.
So I, I suggested, why don't we call dispatch, and you bring the dog to the shelter. They'll go there and open up the door and we put it in. So we're, we're gonna try that for a while and see how that works out. And they're willing to do that. They, they just can't get it, get in after hours to put the dog in.
Talking like the individual person was the concern.
Yes.
Physically taking said animal.
Yeah, someone's caught a dog.
Somebody, somebody would.
At LEC, yeah, bring it in. We'll have somebody meet you there, put, put the dog in.
That'll help the summers.
Because we got city police departments in town. They've got access. Our county guys, if they're cleared up, the doors are right away. The Long John just...
Well, that's better than nothing.
I talked to Dean and, and Cory on that a little bit, and Dean said if he's capable, he would pick him up and haul.
Yeah, he's doing one that's really likes doing it.
Yes, but the, the other guys know.
Yeah, they don't want to put this dog in the back of their car. And I don't know why, because they...
Muddy, dirty dog that stinks.
Pukes and poops in their car. Yeah.
Well, that's a good, yeah, that's good. That won't solve the entire problem.
No, but it's an alternative.
It, it helps if they happen to have a nice dog and they have no idea whose it is.
Mm-hmm.
And they're saying, ah, here, we'll take it there, and then you can advertise that there's a dog.
Find it a new home.
But if there's one mean, ugly looking thing running amok in the country, I don't think anybody's gonna go capture the thing and take it to shelter. So, you know, it, it'll help in some instances, I'm sure.
Yeah. And like you say, it doesn't help that dog that runs around that nobody can catch.
Right, right. Well, at least it's a step in the right direction.
That's moving the, yeah, it's, it's an alternative, like I said.
Except the repeat offender.
Yeah, the repeat offender. I think she had it four times, you know, and we said, you know, and the woman pays her fifty dollars every time.
Oh, my goodness.
Well, it's an expensive dog you have around.
I was gonna say.
Well, not just fifty.
At my house, that repeat offender might be banned.
He might be.
Even though I like my dog, fifty dollars a ton, I'm talking about beating.
And while we're at the meeting, somebody come in and picked up, picked up a dog and paid her fifty or a hundred dollars, and there was another one that likes to roam. I guess when they roam, it roams like, damn, man, it goes to Brad, he goes to Bo, he goes to August. It really, um, and it's from Gilmore City. It goes a lot less.
Wow.
An interesting thing going on there. But anyway, I think we're done with that. Ben, you wanna... Oh, I didn't, yeah, we got Sandy to take care of it, okay.
The, uh, the first item that I've got on the agenda is to set the date and time for the Iowa DOT budget and the DOT five-year plan. Typically, I think we set that like two weeks out. Uh, I don't know what you guys just scheduled this for twenty eighth, ninth, is it?
Twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine. I don't have anything down.
I don't have, no, you have down this, Rick?
I won't be here.
Okay.
But they might be...
What's the detail, Ben? Uh, this is the DOT budget, which is the same as the county budget for us. Anyway, my budget will be the same for the DOT as it is for the county.
Right.
The guys are approving. And then approving the five-year plan that we're working on, which we did a work session here.
I'll go through that and, um, I figured out. Pretty, pretty good.
Right, yeah. And I'm, I'm heavy on year five. I drew a bunch of projects on year five where we don't physically have the money to build all of them.
But if you're on the five-year plan.
But if you're on the five-year plan and green light, word is come available, we can always...
We can always not do them, but you can't do them unless you're not on the five-year plan.
Right.
Well, really, this isn't gonna be, uh, this has all been gone through. It's just...
Everything's been gone through.
This is a procedural thing.
Formally approved and accepted by the DOT by the fifteenth of April.
Yeah. I don't see the, to take about fifteen minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to set the budget and the five-year plan for DOT, eight thirty-five on Monday through twenty-one.
No second.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll give a copy of that to the paper for advertising. The other item that I've got on the agenda is to discuss and possibly act on the amendment, Article Six of, uh, my contract, which is basically just setting out wages over a three-year span. Uh, you guys calculated during the work session. Basically, what I was looking at was, uh, three percent, three percent, two point nine for the next three years. And I know Rick and I had talked, uh, over this past week. Obviously, if the county board comes back in and recommends, uh, a pay freeze or something like that, I would follow suit, uh, to a game for, move on my choice to hold to the contract percentage when everybody else took the pay freeze or lesser or no.
Well, how about more simplified? It's a three-year contract. Nothing on, you know, charter that's approved for the coming fiscal year, twenty-one, twenty-two, three percent. Past that, the three years, there's no language in there about pay.
Okay.
Just a three-year contract.
Just a three-year contract with nothing spelled out as far as wage?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you can see, you didn't speak incorrectly about the direction, but versus putting in a bunch of gobbledygook wording about all this happened and this won't happen, just leave it as a three-year contract, knowing that you already are for the coming fiscal year. So take the language out of any pay increase or anything past that.
Okay.
The three-year contract.
And then my wage beyond that would be based on...
You say, well, well...
The hours never looked at coming.
No, I think, yeah, oh. I think what, it makes a lot, because it's, obviously, we set that increase. So as you can see, the, the trend, but I just think it looks better if there's no, you know, percentage guarantee on a contract, because you have nothing to do with the county board. The county board is not your elected officials, so that's not...
Yeah.
And it reads that the, the board supervisors...
Should actually leave the county board out, particularly with the discretion.
And so, yeah, that's why I say, I think rather than trying to put a bunch of gobbledygook language in pay, just leave that out. Because you already are moving forward. We've already decided that for the next fiscal year budget. And then this, a three-year contract, basically.
Okay.
And I'm all in favor of your three-year contract.
Yeah, I think that's...
I think that's...
Yeah, that's, you have, that's a fair request. I think that's good for both parties.
Okay.
And let's just leave it at a three-year contract.
That's fine. I can, uh, I can edit the, the language on this and just have it kind of be up here. You guys can sign it next week or whatever.
That's fair.
And I think the cookies that they, that you brought, that contract, that was a huge... Huge hit right from my point anyways.
I'll, I'll tell my wife. The bull's around Christmas, I'm sure.
Uh, you do that. Yeah, I'll do that. Yeah, we, uh, we started early this morning moving snow.
What time did it snow? I didn't even, was it midnight?
Yeah, it was, uh...
After midnight.
It was up at one, and it wasn't white.
Well, that's, I thought, I thought I heard it raining for a while, and then it got up at five o'clock. It was pretty white.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we, you know, just discussion. My guess is about five inches around unprotected areas and...
Other than...
Well, right now, it's everything, the box is really wet. It's pretty, that's what we're excited about. The guys are all off, feeling it off, and temperatures are already thirty-four, thirty-five, I think my truck said, so...
Yeah, it'll come off pretty good, hopefully.
Well, that's a, run over a couple, couple times. Like that last one was similar.
Yep.
But this may not get quite as warm today.
I don't know how much we're gonna run on gravels, because I'm sure it's...
Yeah, you know, the ditches.
I got a question, um, not snow related.
Sure.
Uh, have they been, did they start, after rocking any of the roads?
Everything, everything that we've been doing up to this point has been building stockpiles.
Okay, yeah.
We have not started.
They haven't physically gone out and started adding any rock on the roads yet?
No, everything's, everything's been going towards stockpiles, and the stockpiles are completed. Uh, I talked to one of the foremen last Friday, and I told him that basically, depending on what we got for snow that started this week, we'd be switching over to hauling on our gravels.
So they will when the weather conditions improve here, that's probably forthcoming.
Right, yeah. If we weren't, if we weren't getting, uh, I, I think they're hauling for snow for two more days this week.
Yeah.
I think Wednesday, Thursday.
It looks like it's gonna be warm.
Yeah, could be some rain, but I wouldn't say by this week, but...
That's starting, starting for sure next week, we'll be hauling on gravel.
We're gonna start, okay, so I, I had a couple questions on that, and I said, I believe that's forthcoming.
Yeah. We've, we've been planning, uh, my blade operators have been working on their rock maps. Uh, being that I got like four new blade operators.
Yeah.
They're learning how to fill out their rock maps.
Okay.
Identifying problem areas, looking at past years, seeing how many cycles they get probably for township.
Yeah.
So I know that's what they've been working on, trying to finish last week. I know, uh, Mike Carpenter was going out with each blade operator the week before that and tried out on some of their problem areas.
Okay, good. So they're kind of, I understand.
And second, uh, I, I've been on a blade for fifteen years.
Right, okay. Now, that was by, what I was doing, the same thing with, uh, Ben Solder, who was up there. Okay.
How, how are we sitting on all of our salt and sand? Did we?
We're, we're still sitting pretty good. Uh...
Knock on wood?
Yeah, knock on wood. Uh, what we saved in sand, we turned around and stuck into equipment on repairs. Uh, a lot of breakdowns, uh, costly ones. But yeah, as far as what we've used on, on salt and sand, uh...
It's pretty good there.
It's been a good one. Yeah, we still have quite a bit in, in the piles.
Good.
Um, at least half in Hardee and Oak, and probably a third in Humboldt.
Good.
I think when the conditions, you know, hopefully this, like we just said, will be gone sooner than later, result where they have it, they use it too. I mean, when we get close to conditions, obviously intersections, sometimes even center of the road, almost glaze ice. Thank God I haven't had too many of this where it's, you know, those slight conditions. They, I think, have really stepped up getting that out, you know, a little more liberally, and it's, it's nice. Yeah, when you get a complaint that, geez, there are quite a bit of, you know, salt, sand in the intersection, but yet you can stop at the intersection versus they call, there's about enough, you can't see it, you slip through the intersection. So it's, it's very well received that it's getting used when needed. And it's nice we didn't have to need it.
Yeah, I'm not having anything until January, really.
Yeah, it helps. Hopefully, this is the last one, so...
You know what they say, uh, how many times on a, on a burden?
Why, on the Robinsons?
Hopefully, Robinsons have...
We got Robinsons.
Yeah, they're here.
They're here.
Okay, back, back to his contract. I look for a motion to approve his contract or a three-year contract with the three percent this year and second and third year at board's discretion.
Oh. Oh, second Sandy's motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so you get that to them next week and sign it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, uh, I'll just empty this out and leave a copy up here.
Okay, that'll be fine.
Anything else for me?
I don't think so.
My only question, so...
No.
Rocking coming up, we're straight up.
Rocking and bleeding roads for the next probably two months. I mean, it'd be nice if, uh, we had a season like last year. I think we were cleaning the ditch and, and, uh, we were all done with bricks and tile, and we were mainly cleaning the ditch by August.
Yeah, hopefully. I've seen them, uh, cutting trees too, I've noticed that.
We did a lot of tree cutting here recently.
Okay, do you have any for us? We've, we got our three thing down here, and that's, we're not having any conversation with them. It's disinformation they sent us.
Disinformation. Kim?
Motion to go on the train.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're in range.
I was gonna say, I don't know.
I got eight fifty-seven.
That's what I got.
I thought you got... Watch must be wrong.
Well, you keep it up that way.
Yeah, I know it's, uh, they take their load off. Nice weather. That's, that's a really good idea.
Yep. Last week, them and, uh, them and Humboldt both were running that shoulder reclaimer, trying to pull in a...
I guess that's what I, that sounds like a more technical, where it kind of slides everything back towards the roadside.
Yep.
That doesn't help. That really is nice. Uh, I know that Tom's, you know, activated that for years.
Deal with Cusworth without, that really, shouldn't we have been in...
You would have thought we would have made, we could have stopped it.
No, I know.
We wanted to do a little bit of patient, I don't know if the landowner's got the mail to a lot of information, but not all the...
Just figuring that, maybe we did come with Webster, we did come with some of the other counties. We always let them in on...
I just wanted to say, you probably, like, do, I always thought, oh, that's, uh, let that take, in a lot of places, that river.
Yeah, and it was really, it was, of course, I mean, there was just not enough moisture in the rocks that we pulled in, it was kind of red down.
Yeah, it really is. See, there's, uh, next week, I think, we're gonna have to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad that very little get out to do. I mean, I think there's probably some cost savings involved with that, and it makes it better conditions for, for the contract.
We spend, uh, thirty-five to fifty thousand a year on head truck.
Yeah. Keep my clothes ready.
Five, it keeps us closer to thirty-five.
It's just, it's just a common sense idea. It really does work.
Wish there was a way we could pull that, you know, when the grass is brown and you see all that rock that has been laid out. I wish we could pull, figure out a way to pull that out of the shoulder to...
On, on a travel road system?
Mm-hmm. Well, everybody, even on the state, you know, you, they see them.
So, uh, right, Hamilton County has a, uh, it's a shoulder reclaimer. Basically, it's, it's set at this, it's almost like an agon implement that goes on the very front of your motorator.
Right.
And what that does is it chews up all the grass and basically kills the, the grass and chews up the sod so that it's not picking bumps. Uh, and it's supposed to let you know when they're gonna have them all up to the front. So you can remember, take a look at their machinery. I wanna say they're about fifty thousand per setup. Like I said, it's hooked on the front of your motorator, so you can be pulling the material in, wood in front, and then plating it back up with your, with your belly blade. Uh, but it's, it's, it's a neat setup. The main thing is to use the auxiliary hydraulics from your wing to run two new lines up, up to the front, because it's got hydraulic jobs on there.
You should have looked at that and see what you're talking about.
Yeah, no, it, it just looks really neat.
You have the ability to, you're gonna save money in the long run, right?
Right. Well, not only that, but you'll, you'll eliminate how many complaints from, from people. Usually, when we cut shoulders, the largest complaint is the large clods aside.
That would, that would get rid of that.
Just will get rid of that.
That's primarily set up for, uh, secondary roads.
For secondary, but you could also run it on pavement similar to...
Probably not as, as applicable, because usually that's, the shoulder's pretty easy. The reclaimer thing, we just...
It's just one...
Back and give it, go backwards along.
It would just be on our heavily sawed and...
Yeah, and some of the...
We had a nice one on a high spray on Wildcat battery was so nice, but he kept combating all the gravel that was down in the ditch. The man was just doing like, uh, kicking back, all that, he pissed a lot out there.
Yeah. Yeah, this time of year, it always looks like...
Right.
Well, the grass is dead, he's eating all right down, and he can't like...
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
All right, well, here we're discussing, uh, Palo Alto, Casu, Humboldt, Project D, Range Number Two, Sub H One, HKOS, which is actually Bloody Run, I think, at the upper end of Bloody Run. So, looks like there's about eight hundred acres of Humboldt County that is involved in this.
That is correct. There's eight hundred, no, eleven acres for Humboldt. There's eight hundred, no, eleven acres for Humboldt County, nine thousand two hundred and eighty acres for Cassouth County and three hundred and seventy-nine for Palo Alto County with a total of two point four million dollars. That's, that should be on your last page and then everybody has copies of all, all landowners for Humboldt with the Humboldt total being the sixteen hundred and fourteen dollars and the last page being the map for Palo Alto.
Did you get a map of Humboldt County? What's, did I see the map of Cassouth County?
Right. It's just the.
Just the tip.
Right, it's just that.
The tip, yeah. I was kind of curious how much land it's gonna be. I know they're doing a reclassification and an annexation, more to hand in, I just wonder how much of Humboldt land. Do you have a map, you have a map of Humboldt County?
No, not just of Humboldt County.
See what Humboldt County's on that map.
Can't do anything once it becomes.
No.
You run, right?
No, no, we have about eight hundred acres in Humboldt County, but it comes in half mile and a bone to Humboldt County or so.
And that's what's in that.
Yeah, it comes in and once it gets on the other side of one sixty-nine, it's Bloody Run. It goes a couple hundred yards on the east side of one sixty-nine.
And I have sent the public notices to each of the landowners.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, that is correct. And they were, you have a copy of that, your front page of all the landowners and they were notified that the official notice, the meeting is being held at the Cassouth County Election Center in Algonah on March thirtieth. And then you have ten AM for the annexation and ten thirty for the reclassification here.
Well, basically it's information for the landowners, of course, it's a small portion of it, even if they didn't like it, there's nothing they could do about it, but it's information for them and the fact they're in this drainage district. I was just kind of curious if we got a lot more land annexed in than there was before, you know, how much it was gonna.
Yeah.
How much, you know, if they're picking up another.
Doesn't look like, well, uh, yeah, it's hard to really tell what it was, what they're changing and what they're classifying.
Yeah.
I have a question on the assessment. Is that additional from what they have been paying or how is that worth, how much of the assessment dollars? What does that actually mean?
That's, that's what will be levied against the Humboldt land.
Right, but is that, you know, if they've been, they've been in this district.
Yeah, that would be their share of the cost of the cleanup.
Okay. That, that's what I, yeah, that's my question is what, what do those assessment dollars mean? Is it that for this project because of the reclassification or just what? Like Rick said, it's hard to tell what, what are they, you know, for reclassification, we don't know, you can't tell where they started and where they ended up after the reclassification.
Well, my question too is out of their proposal for the two point four million dollar project, how, how does that, I guess, how, how do each of the Humboldt resident and landowners, how are they affected if the project goes over budget or if they're under budget? I mean, this is just preliminary?
Only based on their point zero six seven thirty percent. This is probably an estimate because this project isn't completely.
It hasn't been bid yet, I don't think.
Okay. So this is all estimated, like Rick, they've got their percentage and it'll be tied to whatever final cost.
Our percentage is gonna be a lot cheaper when we only have sixteen hundred and fourteen dollars.
Right.
Versus the one point six eight nine for Cassouth County, if they go over budget, it's gonna cost them a lot more.
Are you sure that this is Bloody Run that this goes into?
Well, not a percent, hard to say sure, but I looked it up, I know last week.
Is this one of, is it section one, five and six of Lena?
Yes.
Is it section one though?
I know, it's my question.
Shouldn't it be like section one of Acuasta and section five and six of?
It is, it's section one of Acuasta and section six.
That comes in out.
Right over by Oxon.
Yeah, right by.
That's not Bloody Run, that's actually the creek that goes past our.
Yeah, it's not Bloody Run, I know.
That's what I thought. Bloody Run doesn't go that far north.
Huh, that's interesting.
Doesn't it dump into Bloody Run?
Like the boat.
It's, it's, it's.
Actually called Fumler Free.
Yeah, it comes in, north into the.
Good one, it's just Acuasta.
No, no, it's this one here, it's this one here, I'm pretty sure, isn't it?
Comes across right here.
Isn't it this one here that's?
Comes down and right here.
Right, that's not Bloody Run.
No.
Cause what's, what's.
That's where it's.
I think it's this one.
I suppose it comes here over here to move.
I know where it's at.
Where's weapon one in Acuasta?
It's Lots Creek.
Right here.
Lots Creek, okay.
Yeah, he has said Lots Creek runs over to.
Oh, it's not Lots Creek.
I don't know which one it is.
Well, their drainage is. They're giving assessments because it runs through here, but it's only, it turns into the, it's only a very small, yeah, part of that.
Yeah, it runs all the way down.
And the.
North of the.
If I can pronounce his last name right, is it Fred Harris? Fred Harris?
Freders?
Freders.
Probably Freders.
He called, he let me know that he had actually received a couple notices because he owned several different sections under different, one's a partnership, one's North Farm, South Farm, but all those addresses, he received notices at his office and address and also ink and he has called back to state that he did receive those.
Yeah.
And he was questioning on the meeting and I said, well, the meeting is noted here and they're also having an AT&amp;T toll conference on that. So I included the toll free number and the access code if anybody wanted to actually, yeah, listen in on that.
Your location figured out there, right?
Yeah, I did. It is Lots Creek, it dumps into.
Uh, I don't know.
Looks like it.
Lots Creek on my map here.
Which, which map are you looking at?
That's the one in the.
My book.
My book.
Acuasta section four.
Let's see, this is Lots Creek, there's five and six.
But it's in.
I think it's this one?
Yes, this one, because if you look at Acuasta.
Yeah, U F N R, it's Lots Creek.
Yeah, but this one stops here.
No.
No, there's open ditch, it's gonna go up there, isn't it?
Yeah. Look at the, they've got the drainage map, there is, there is an open ditch here. In their day, Acuasta number one.
Yep.
Shows the ditch, that's why it's a small portion because this is where it must be considered correct and the ditch is, it doesn't show the drainage ditch, I don't believe.
Looks like it ends.
Yeah, it's the.
Just south of one sixty-nine.
Okay, cause this is Garfield North of Oz and it's just pertaining to this district right here over to the open ditch.
Yep.
So that's our eight hundred and eleven acres.
So it's just very, yeah, here's the area of Humboldt County portion of that district, yep.
Yeah, section one and two of Acuasta.
Which actually this is probably, it's weird, that's one of those that, I believe, I believe it.
And this, I'm not sure how far, I mean, according to the map that was sent from Cassouth County, it's only showing half of section six here. So it would only be down through this district here. Even though our open ditch is down here, so I don't know if they're actually dropping this district or not, cause I don't have a full map from Cassouth County.
Lena Creek is where it dumped into.
I, that's where it was, North of Oz and you can't, it dumped into Lots Creek.
Yeah.
It's one of the north national creeks over by Helen Close. It's not, uh, that's a.
This here, this yellow line is where the Humboldt Cassouth.
South and that's somewhere in that field.
Subdivision drops off here and.
That still might be ditch. So we're not thinking.
I don't know, when you, when you switch over to Delana County, if they're including this.
It's about.
This. Yeah, J T six, HK eight eight. Yeah, because if that's the case.
Many years.
They're cutting it off halfway through this section.
Rest of the way.
So it.
Maybe that, maybe that drainage area there.
Could possibly be Cassouth six two.
Let me know as a may, I see what, just a small portion of.
But these, these, there were a couple landowners up here that were actually part of the.
Well, does that mean in this, looking at clean up project, are they gonna clean them to the border of said, you know, where, that great word on the map where the drainage district split in Humboldt County then, are they gonna clean up to that point?
They're, they haven't gotten any conversations with them.
That's what I didn't, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, if they're, if they're assessing these dollars in that district, is that part of the project? You know, the physical cleaning all the way into, cause where it shows boundary is just that, not a real big amount.
Right, whose area is that Cassouth County for?
I'm not sure. Not sure who's over that side of the county.
But I may have to listen in on the toll conference because I need to know if the, if this project that is not actually included on this map, how far down into our drainage district does that go? Does it stop at Hundred and Tenth Street and Georgia Avenue or is it going all the way over to Hawaii Avenue?
My guess is if we're getting sixteen hundred dollars, you cannot change it.
That's why I'm curious what they're.
They're swinging the machine over Humboldt County a couple of times, that's, I mean, you are gonna get.
You're gonna go for sixteen hundred dollars, they're cleaning a ditch.
Cause what I'm assuming now, since this is the only portion that's in the district, I'm assuming they're stopping here at the district border.
I'm just curious.
I don't think.
Portion of the ditch of Humboldt County.
I don't think.
That's not a very big assessment. Don't look like it. Not that I'm sure the landlord would wanna pay much money, but sixteen hundred dollars total for the part of it to Humboldt County, like Bruce said, you can't move the machine across the road for that.
Well, of course, that's more immobilized something.
Could you ask that? Are they gonna actually physically clean the fortune of the ditch at Humboldt County?
Well, right now, all the information that I have is just the seven hundred and twenty-one page of engineering reports.
Oh, you have that?
It's online.
Oh, it's online. Off page?
Seven hundred and twenty-one and it's all Cassouth County residents. I openly printed the Humboldt portion. Right.
No, but Cassouth at one point six hundred, Palo Alto has gotta be a pretty good sized report too, cause they're just guys up a hundred thousand.
Yeah, I got the link and I scrolled through it and told them Humboldt County.
Eight hundred and, eight hundred and eleven acres into Humboldt County.
Yeah, so it's two bucks acre.
Yeah, cause none of these assessments is very big, very, very much bad.
If you can just kind of find out if they're actually gonna physically clean Humboldt County.
Right, yeah, at this point, all I.
Yeah, and all our, all our landowners have been notified so they can attend if they like, so.
Right, and.
That would be the question I'd see, are they just unfortunately, because they're in the district, they get to pay that proportion?
I'm guessing.
That's what.
That sounds like, huh, that's the deal. They're part of the district, they're.
You're up in that area and what does that look like?
Plus we get all the water.
Yeah.
Is it a decent looking ditch?
Well, like you said, I, yeah, I mean, thinking where it goes, yeah, yeah, it is. That's what Ben and I were having the conversation, I think it gets way, many years ago that wasn't, but they may improve it to a ditch, to go just the last part, a couple miles. Pretty sure it is just, a ditch part, I think it ends just. Where it is ditch from there and ditch all the way up, you know, all the way into Cassouth County.
Well, it must be fairly lengthy if it gets all the way up to Palo Alto.
Yep. So, but yeah, often even, you know, I don't wanna drive bodies off enough, you're honest with me, that's a ditch itself.
Decent shade.
Yeah. I don't. Not a lot of workovers on it up there either, so if that counts anything, there's always a few, but it's more tiles and stuff than ditch. So it's, yeah, that's pretty good. But there's a big, a pretty big amount of it across County too.
If you talk to anybody in Cassouth, absolutely, specifically, they're the.
Yeah, contact number up there.
I'll talk to them if there's any, I think they're.
Best one, Don?
Don Best, I know I had business with him up there before, but I doubt that it's his area.
No, but to me, for.
He's retired.
He's retired. Rick, you know who replaced Don on their board?
No, I don't.
Didn't know if it was.
One of them.
Was it?
No, I know Galen Casey.
I bet it's Galen Casey.
I took his, I get business with Galen, I have a pretty good contact with him back and forth once in a while. That is, that was Don's area, cause I also got with Don way back in the day on a couple of joint, like things like this with some file issues, so.
I'll email Marge and ask her who the supervisors are for that.
I'll actually get if Galen replaced Don, if Galen's area.
All right.
Okay, well, beat that horse.
Yep, I think we got it figured out to the degree that we can.
Okay, and they got up there.
Not much drainage today, it looks pretty white.
No, I just have a few invoices, the Sandy's already pre-approved her claim, so I'll need her stamp and then I've got two more.
Okay, all the promotions. First, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.